Welcome and thank you for being with us tonight, October 8th, 2024, for the Emeryville School Board Candidate Forum. My name is Dr. Sharon Goldfarb of the League of Women Voters of Berkeley Albany Emeryville. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We do not support or oppose candidates or parties. The advocacy arm of the league may take positions on issues such as ballot measures. However, this forum is presented by the Voter Services and Education Arm of the League, which does not take a position or advocate for them. I'd like to remind everyone that the candidates have all agreed to participate underground rules set in the forum, and the ground rules are posted in the chat. You can see a little link there. Candidates are not permitted to display campaign buttons, T-shirt signs, Zoom backgrounds, etc., in order to maintain neutrality. We are recording tonight's forum and the session will be available on our YouTube channel, our website, L W B B A E dot org through four one one dot org, with links on our social media account at L W B B A E. There are four candidates running for the Emeryville School Board. They are Brian Donahue, John T. Van Giffen, Elsie Lee, and Walter Pizarro. On your ballot, you will be able to choose two candidates out of the four. Walter Pizarro has declined our invitation and John Van Giffen is unable to attend tonight, but he has sent a statement which I will read later in the forum. Now let's just go over a few of the ground rules. Each candidate will have two minutes for opening remarks. The order was determined by drawing lots. The timekeeper will signal candidates with green colored window, which will count down the seconds from two to fifteen seconds to go, when it will turn yellow and then red when the time is up. As people signed up, they were encouraged to submit questions for candidates. All questions have been screened to avoid duplication and personal attacks. The order of answering the questions will be alternated, and each candidate will have two minutes to respond to each question. Again, the timekeeper will signal candidates. There will be no separate rebuttals. However, the candidate may choose to use some or all of their two minutes to refute the responses given by another candidate following the questions. Each candidate shall have one minute for a closing statement. And here is the statement of the incumbent candidate, John Van Giffen. He says, quote, "First, thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting such an important event, helping keep the community informed and offering me the opportunity to submit a candidate statement. To the community and my fellow candidates, my apologies for not attending. I am currently on a flight to the East Coast to help my parents, who are in their eighties, move into a new home for the next phase of their lives. My name is John Van Giffen and I take the continued stewardship of EU SD extremely seriously. I am grateful to have the endorsement of every sitting member of the school board, as well as the Emeryville Mayor Courtney Welch. Four issues that I'm proud to have supported during my tenure include: One, installing the nearly completed solar panel project to lower operating costs and show students the value of a brighter and more sustainable future. Two, providing salary and benefit raises for all our teachers to improve teacher retention, job satisfaction, and attract high-quality teachers. Three, approving budget that provides free meals for students to reduce food insecurity and improve academic performance and student health. Four, continued support for D E I initiatives and students' mental health and social emotional learning. While I don't take credit, I do take pleasure in reporting that C A A S P P test scores across the board have continued to increase during my time on the board and currently exceed the state average. Please vote for me so I can continue my work towards giving our children every advantage possible. Lastly, as a reminder to the Emeryville community, EU SD has a lifelong health facility on campus, providing convenient access to medical, behavioral, and oral health services. If you or someone you know needs assistance, please reach out. No one should go it alone." And that is the end of John Van Giffen's statement. Now let's begin with our first question, and I did a random selection, and we're starting with Elsie Lee.
Um, excuse me, yes, opening statement first.
Oh, sorry, our opening statements, and we'll start with Elsie. You have two minutes for opening statement.
First, I would like to thank the Women's Voters League for giving me this opportunity today to come before the people within my community. I am not only an Emeryville resident, I am a parent of an Emory High School student. I have seen the changes that have occurred within Emeryville and within our school district, and I strive to make them better, not only to enhance our community involvement, but also to enhance our special ed department. Our special ed department have suffered greatly. I also would like to be able to bring in and retain good teachers. I myself am a student. I attend Cal State East Bay in a pre-law program. I graduated last May from Berkeley City College with a degree in sociology and psychology, and I am the founder of a nonprofit organization called Sisters with Voices, where I strive to end the cycle of mass incarceration, where mass incarceration starts with our students in the schools. So I would really like to bring in programs for our at-risk students so that we can identify who they are and give them a better opportunity in this community than what they currently have. That's it.
Okay, opening statement, Brian Donahue.
Okay, I've got nothing written. I'm winning it. So I've lived in Emeryville for forty-two years. My wife and I have a nineteen-year-old daughter who went to Emory schools all the way into high school, but we took her out and she graduated from Berkeley High School because there's a high level of dysfunctionality at Emory Unified School District. And Berkeley is a much more, much more highly functional school district than Emory. So our daughter now goes to Berkeley City College. So I have to take issue with what the incumbent John Van Giffen said about the test scores being better than state average. That was done by extreme cherry picking on Mr. Van Giffen's part. In fact, Emory is way, way below, in the aggregate, way below state average, unless you pick like the little obscure picky categories, which he obviously did. So I really take issue with that. And then the solar panels, he's claiming credit for, I take issue with that. We already paid for those solar panels when we passed Measure C. That was the ninety-five million dollar bond that built the Emory Center for Community Life. That's the school campus. So we already paid for that more than a decade ago. So Emory Unified is a highly dysfunctional school district. And so the reason why I'm running is because we need new voices. It's very extremely insular, and we have the same personalities rotating, and they're friends, or it's taking positions. What happens is school board members will run for reelection, and they'll take the incumbent advantage, and then they will drop out before they finish their term, and then their friends on the district will appoint a replacement for them. And that's why we never seem to get new blood on the school board. And so I'm seeking to redress that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going to have the candidates answer your questions that were previously submitted. Question number one, this time we'll start with Brian. Why are you running for the school board?
Okay, I'm running. Can you hear me? Okay, I'm running because if I hadn't put my name in the hat, there would have been no election in November. Because that's what usually happens in the forty years, forty-two years of my living in Emeryville. Of all those school board elections, I can count, on one hand, the number where the people of Emeryville have been able to vote. And of the condition I just told you about, and that is, we don't have elections. The Alameda County Board of Registered Voters does not hold an election if there are no challengers to incumbent seats. And usually there are no challengers because everyone knows you're going to lose against an incumbent because of the incumbent advantage. So I run to mix that up and upset that and make it so that we will have an election. So this time, I waited to register to vote until the last possible minute. I watched the registered voters carefully, and I watched the two incumbents, Mr. Van Giffen and Ms. Solis, were both registered, you know, to run in November. And I waited until the last possible minute, the day before the last possible day. And then I realized, okay, it's going to happen again. No one's going to run, and then there'll be no election. So I registered to run, and then immediately Kimberly Solis, the outgoing school board member, announced she's not going to run. So that's why we're having an election right in November, is because I did that. So I'm going to keep doing that, because we're going to keep having elections as long as I live in Emeryville. I'm going to make sure we have elections for school board in Emeryville, because I can't stand this insularity and this lack of democracy. The people have to have a chance to be able to decide their school board members, and so I'm going to make sure that happens from now on. Thanks.
And Elsie Lee, same question. Why are you running for school board?
I'm running for school board so that I can be the change that I want to see. Like I said before, I am a parent of Emory High School, and I can't continue to complain about the things that was going on there if I'm not willing to step in to be some sort of change for the things that's going on there. I believe that we do have some at-risk children at that school that we need to target and hone in on so that we can support them and surround them with love and support and services so that this crime wave that we have, like, it can stop because they have something active and productive that they're doing. I want to be able to bring the community into Emory and bring Emory out into the community. I can remember we went to a job fair, and my son was hoping, he had just turned sixteen, he was hoping that he would be able to get a job, and none of the jobs that was at the job fair was for him, but it was a school-sponsored event. So I want to make sure that the next school-sponsored event that we had, not only are we focused on the community, but we're focused on our kids that attend there. We're focused, we're giving them love, we're giving them support, we're giving them some of the things that some of our kids aren't getting at home, which is a hug. Each teacher that come there, that's good, that's amazing. I want to make sure that they're staying there and they're not leaving for the next high-paying position. They're not leaving because they can't deal with some of the conditions there. So that's why I'm running, for our kids.
Thank you. And Elsie, we're going to start with you for this question first. We're ping-ponging back and forth. The question is, what has your involvement with Emeryville been thus far? Have you served on any committees, commissions, panels, or other entities within the city?
No, this is my first time. And like I said, I do have my own nonprofit organization, and I strive to end the cycle of mass incarceration. And I was on my job and my car was attempted to be stolen, which now has been stolen. But when the people who stole my car, they were fifteen-year-old kids. And that lit a fire in me because at the moment that they tried to steal my car, it was twelve o'clock in the afternoon. They should have been in school. They weren't supposed to be out joyriding and breaking into people's cars. So at that time, I went and I created a program for our kids so that we can give our kids tools to be able to use, have a program for them to be able to go to a safe place that they can call home at the end, a place where they can get a free meal and wash their clothes. So I'm only doing this out of my own passion and dedication for the community in which I live in.
Thank you. Brian, same question.
And what was the question again? I'm sorry.
It's okay. What has your involvement with Emoryville been thus far? Have you served on any committees, commissions, panels, or other entities within the city?
Oh, yeah, many, many, many. I mean, like, too many to count over the last forty years. Although I'm sort of a dissenter, and so I'm kind of, there's a culture now at City Hall where I'm kind of frozen out because there's a new culture and they don't like dissenting voices. So, but in the past, before that culture existed, yeah, I served on many committees. But I wanted to say, take my opportunity here to say, what's the problem with Emory? And that is, we've got extremely low test scores, but more important than that, our ranking in Alameda County School District is second to the bottom. Now, I don't pay that much attention to test scores because everybody knows those just show the relative wealth of the parents or the guardians of the child. And so wealthy people have, their children have higher test scores, and less wealthy people have lower test scores. That's been proven ad infinitum. But what I do pay attention to is the ranking. And Emory, of the sixteen school districts, I'm sorry, it's fifteen school districts in Alameda County, Emory is number fourteen, only behind New Haven School District down in the southern part of the county. And this is when you factor in, when you control for English as a second language, our English learners. And so Emory is extraordinarily bad, and yet we spend the most, by far, per student. We spend about twenty-eight thousand dollars per student, and that's just terrible, like horrible result for a huge amount of money. So I think we should be, we need new priorities. We need to stop spending so much money on corporate educational consultants and instead give teachers more money. Because in the Bay Area, Emeryville teachers get paid slightly less than average in the Bay Area. And so we need to pay them more so we can retain, you know, I have a higher teacher retention. We need to pay the teachers more. Thanks.
Okay, and Brian, we're going to start with you first for this question. According to U.S. News and World Report, in Emeryville Unified School District, thirty-six percent of elementary students tested at or above the proficiency level for reading, and twenty-three percent tested at or above the level for math. Also, thirty-six percent of middle school students tested at or above the proficiency level for reading, and seven percent tested at or above that level for math. And it seems that only twelve point five percent of high school students exhibit college readiness. What changes to curricula, student-centered pedagogical approaches, and programs for families would you recommend to improve achievement outcomes in the district?
First of all, I'd say that that question was positive by an incumbent. And again, it's cherry picking numbers. I've got numbers here, there. I've got my own notes here for every school district in Alameda County. And those numbers, those high numbers, high achieving numbers for Emory that were just quoted, those are all cherry picked. The real numbers I've got straight from that California Board of Education. Okay, in science, twelve percent, Emory Unified School District, twelve percent proficiency. In English, forty-one percent, and math, twenty-one percent. Then if you go to the black community, we are failing our black students. It's only ten percent proficiency for black students at Emory. And then I can go through, I mean, cherry picking of numbers is reprehensible for any incumbent to do, in my opinion, because they're trying to hide the fact that they're not doing a good job. And then who gets hurt by that are the students. So I find that reprehensible. And so, but then the question is, like, what do we need to change? What we need to do is get rid of some of the, we're very top-heavy in terms of administration. We have the highest admin-to-student ratio in the entire Bay Area. So we need to lop off some of our admin that are really expensive. And then we need to stop paying corporate educational consultants because it's clearly not working since we're second to last place. And we need to dump, take all that money and pour it into paying teachers more because there is the people in the trenches. There is the people, the teachers are the ones that know how to teach the student. They are the pedagogical experts. And so we should stop, like I said, the corporate educational consultants, that's got to stop. Right now, we spend only nineteen percent of our budget spent on education of children, and that's less than half of the Bay Area standard for the school districts. So that's got to change. We've got to start spending money on instruction and on teachers.
Okay, Elsie, would you like me to repeat the question, or are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay.
So what I would do would change, I would close the gap between family and school. There's a gap between me sending my child to school and my child coming home. So if we created a position for a family resource officer, somebody that is neutral to the school and the family, they're that third person that's going to be able to close that gap. If a teacher is sending home homework that the parents don't understand how to do, how do the parents help the students do the homework? We've seen Common Core math come into play over the last fifteen years. That's a lot different than the math that I did fifteen years ago, twenty years ago. So it kind of makes it challenging to assist a student when I don't know how to do the work. So we created that position for that family resource officer. That family resource officer can bring in free educational tutors from out of the community that can come and sit down with the parents and help them be able to help our students. The teachers in the school, they're only a little bit of the pie. Once they come home, it's my job, and it's your job, and it's our job as a family, as a community, as parents, to pick up the slack and continue to help our children elevate to the next level. So I'm not going to say that the teacher should change the way that they're teaching or that the curriculum should be different. I think that the support that we're providing to the families to be able to help their children should be different. I'm done.
Thank you. And you get to answer this question first. What is your understanding of the severity of the achievement or opportunity gap in the district? And what evidence-based approaches would you support if elected?
Can you say that one more time?
Sure.
Please.
Sure, happy to. What is your understanding of the severity of the achievement or opportunity gap in the district? And what evidence-based approaches would you support if elected? Or how would you close the achievement gap?
Like I said, we have to bring it, and it has to be a community thing. We're a village. It takes a village to raise a kid. I can't sit here and say that I was blessed at Emory where my child has been for the last four years. I did have a village within there, which in turn, it made my child be able to succeed more. So if we bring in more of the village and take out more, because we all know it's evident that it takes a village to raise a child. And we utilize the school as our village. We utilize the teachers as our village. We utilize the administration as our village. We utilize the superintendent as our village. All these people have to be a part of the village in order to close any gaps. The security guard at Safeway, it has to be part of our village. The worker at KFC that has to be part of our village. So we're not bringing the community in to interact with our kids. Our kids aren't going to know how to interact with the community. And thus, it's going to keep on being a whirlwind of missed opportunities for them because they're not even getting what they need to be able to successfully function in this rural world on a professional level. I mean, we see it every day. We're watching them where they don't wear their pants pulled up. They're walking around with a hoodie on their head, and it's unprofessional, which means they're not going to succeed and move very far in this world if we're not giving them those tools. So part of what I say, bring back the village, make Emory the city of Emory. It's growing here. It's becoming a big thing. They're building new apartments. Every time we turn around, there's new people coming into our community that we can add to our village to make this such a wonderful district for our kids.
Hey, Brian, same question.
Okay, first, I have to say, I liked a lot of what I heard from Elsie. But in addition to that, I would say, we need to make all these local corporations, these giant corporations have their headquarters in Emory. We need to start making them pay, donating, giving money to our school district, like Pixar, for instance. It's actually more than a trillion-dollar corporation. And when they expanded their campus several years ago, they promised that if we gave them permission to let them expand the campus, that they would continue to generously fund the Emory School District. And they were funding at the time at about a hundred thousand dollars a year before the pivotal election where we gave them that, there was a quid pro quo. We said, they said, we'll give you the district money, but you just got to just vote yes for our campus expenses. So we voted yes, and they immediately turned the spigot off. So we've got to make Pixar, we've got to shame them into fulfilling their promise to fund the school district and all the other giant corporations in our community. We need to start shaming them to start helping our students, helping our children, helping the school district because they're not giving. I mean, it's extremely, it's like a desert from the local corporate community. And then further, again, what we need to do is pay teachers more, get rid of the corporate consultants, just get rid of that because it's not working. And then, so, you know, we have, like, we are extremely well-off financially, this district. Like twenty-eight thousand dollars per student is by far the highest in the entire East Bay, where it's only one other school district is slightly higher than ours, and that's thirty thousand dollars per student. And that's, I think, like Hillsborough School District, like where billionaires live. So we are extremely wealthy district in terms of how much money we have. And most of our money comes locally from parcel taxes. Like, for instance, our local revenue is seventy-two percent of our budget is local revenue.
Brian, sorry, time's up. Okay, and we're going to start with you this next question, which is, what qualifications and experiences would you look for in a school superintendent candidate if you were on a search committee?
Is that to me? Yeah, okay, I would say, the school superintendent is there to support the teachers. That's the job. Pretty much nothing other than chasing money around, try to get more money, but pretty much just supporting the teachers. Not supporting the, you know, the administration or whatever, supporting the teachers. Like, if the teachers need something, they should go to the superintendent, and then as long as it's legal, the superintendent works to get that done. So the teachers should be in the number-one position. And then the superintendent and the admin are subordinate to the teachers. That's what I would do. I'd find somebody that would sign on to that philosophical construct. But to get back to what I was saying, Emory is extremely well-off in terms of money because we tax ourselves. We have all these parcel taxes. And so of our budget, the local revenue category is seventy-two percent. And the state average is thirty-nine percent, and all the other Alameda County school districts are right around forty percent. So we are way ahead, and it's because the people of Emeryville are extremely generous to the school district. And I hate to see the money that we are so generously giving to our school district be frittered away, like on educational consultants and all these unneeded administration positions that we fund so lavishly. We need to spend money on teachers. So we have a really high teacher pay so we can attract the best and the brightest and retain our good teachers. I'd love to see it so our teachers are paid so well that Emory becomes the school district you want to work for if you're a teacher because the pay is so high, and also because they're highly respected by the superintendent and what have you. So high pay for teachers, that's the solution. Thank you.
Okay, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, ma'am. So the qualifications that I would look for in a superintendent if I was on their search committee would be that they're passionate about the students that they're going to serve, that they themselves have set in the classrooms as well, and that they are community and family-centered. That's all I have.
Thank you. And Elsie, we're going to start with you again with this next question. Facing an unhealthy financial situation, how would you approach the problem and what solutions would you consider?
Can you repeat it one more time?
Sure. Facing an unhealthy financial situation, how would you approach the problem and what solutions would you consider?
First, I'm going to have to take the deep breath. So first, I'll Um, so first I'll take a deep breath. And then, the solution, I ha- I, financial, I have to find money. So even if that mean that we have to do fundraisers and sell hot dogs on Saturday in the school parking lot, get some sodas and, you know, um, you, you can't worry about the problem, you have to be solution based. So my solution would be, how do we find the money? Where do we get the money from? How do we generate this revenue? What letters are we gonna write to which corporations to get this money donated to, um? Sorry, but yeah, it's find it, not problem, not being problem based, but being solution based. You have to be solution based in this, and I'm not, it's not gonna be the time to point fingers at who was supposed to do what, when they were supposed to do it, what money was wasted on. The time is gonna be to figure out, how do we fix this problem? Because at the end of the day, our kids, our babies, they're depending on us at the end of the day. Like they depend on mommy and daddy when they go home. They're gonna depend on me to make the right decisions and the right choices when the time come down to it. They're gonna look at me as if I'm another parent, and when it don't go right, I failed them. I have to go to bed at night knowing that I didn't make the right decision for these babies who are helpless in the situation. They come to school every day, they learn, it's my job to figure out where the money come. Just like my baby, he go to school, he do his schoolwork, it's my job to figure out where the money for the bills come from. Same with our students in the schools. I'm done.
Thanks, Brian, same question.
Good, can you re- repeat it only so that people, uh, can, can, can hear it right before my answer? So please repeat.
Sure. Facing an unhealthy financial situation, how would you approach the problem and what solutions would you consider?
Okay, the question has to just be rhetorical, because as I pointed out earlier, we don't have an unhealthy fi- financial situation, quite the opposite. Emory, people need to understand this, Emory is awash in money. Now, could we use more money? Sure. And, and the way we, way we should get more money is from the corporate sector that is incredibly stingy in Emeryville. So rhetorically, I would say, go to the corporate sector and just embarrass them, publicly embarrass them and get them to cough up money. I mean, they're talking about how they wanna be good corporate neighbors and good stewards of the, you know, the land and what have you. Well, well, let's make them put their money where their mouth is, but we, so I, uh, they should be doing that, even though we are very, a very wealthy school district, they should still be doing, giving us our, um, the money we need. Again, the people of Emeryville are incredibly generous to the school district with their parcel taxes that we keep voting for. That's why we have so much money. Twenty-eight thousand dollars per student is, you know, that's a double. The highest, the second highest school district, uh, under Emeryville is Berkeley, and they, they get about eighteen thousand dollars per student per year. So, we're like almost double that, so we have plenty of money. We're just frittering it away, so we need to be, just properly put the money where that we don't, where, where it will do the most good. And that's, I, and I believe is in teachers' pockets, that's not in corporate educational consultants. And especially, there's a lot of mutual back scratching with that, a lot of friends of, of people that run these corporations. And so, friends of people in, in, on the school board, so, you know, we, we gotta spend our money more, more, uh, where, you know, it has bigger bang for the buck. But we have plenty of money, that's a rhetorical question, there's my answer, thank you very much.
Okay, Brian, we're starting with you with this question, which is, are there current programs or other areas of the school budget that you believe should be cut in the current fiscal environment?
Okay, wow, I've already said it, like, with every answer, and so I guess I'll say it again. We should cut the money that we earmark or set aside and, uh, for educational consultants. If we were like, the, the top school district that I'll, Alameda, in Alameda County, or like in the top five, I'd say, well, let's keep spending money on educational, educational consultants, cause that seems to be doing, working pretty well. But we're in the second to the last place, so clearly, and we spend so much on it. So clearly, that's not working, we gotta give that up. So stop the educational consultants, and, uh, you know, I, like I said, I've said it every answer, but it's a, it's a, we're, we're just hemorrhaging money there, and it's for no benefit other than the, these corporations that, that offer their services. And, you know, maybe some, I don't know, there's any kickbacks, I, I doubt it, I haven't heard of that, about that, but it's, yeah, that's, that's, that's the answer to the question. Thank you.
Elsie, would you like to, me to read that question again?
No ma'am, but I would like to say something. Um, Mr. Donahue, you keep saying that they spend twenty-eight thousand dollars per year, per student. Do you know that they spend a hundred and twelve thousand dollars per year, per inmate? So, it's not that we don't need the money, we do need the money. If we're willing to spend a hundred and twelve thousand dollars per year, per inmate, uh, twenty-eight thousand dollars per year, per student is nothing. So I would rather, uh, spend a hundred and twelve thousand dollars to educate our students than a hundred and twelve thousand dollars to imprison our students, because that's where they're gonna be headed next. There are no programs that I, our departments that I would like to see cut. I would like to see departments added, like I said before, the, the community resource officer to bridge the gap between students, families and school. Um, I would like, I would also like to see more community involvement, more things that we're bringing the community in on, you know. I live locally, and I was talking to a lady at the nail shop, and she didn't even know that NE8s existed. So we're gonna spend reach, letting these new apartments know that we sit right on the corner of Forty-seventh and San Pablo, and we're open for enrollment, and that we're willing to bring their kids in, love their kids and educate their kids. But I don't think that we should cut any programs, we need to add more programs. We need to get our babies out of the streets. Our babies do not need to be hanging out in, um, at Bay Street after school. Our babies need to be in after-school programs, our babies need to be doing swim club, whatever kinda club, our babies need to be there. The after-school program that the parents are paying for, our parents shouldn't have to struggle to pay rent and put food on the table and send their kids to after-school program. We need to pour money into things to keep these babies out of the streets, so that they don't end up in prison. Because that's the only other place that they're gonna end up at. I'm done, thank you.
Okay, and Elsie, this question is, we're, we're gonna start with you. Are teachers and staff adequately compensated in the district? If not, how would you seek to ameliorate the situation? Do you support parents fundraising independently?
Of course I support parents fundraising independently. I don't think that our teachers are compensated enough. I do feel that that's why we are not retaining the good teachers that we have at Emory, at NE8s. I can remember my son's first year, I haven't mentioned this yet, but my son is autistic. And he's in their program at Emory, and the teacher that loved on him and loved on him and loved on him, she left him his first year. And the reason why she left was due to pay. And I can remember telling myself, he not going back to that school. I'm gonna have to find somewhere else, because I couldn't see nobody else pouring that amount of love that Ms. James had poured into my baby. He ended up with a new teacher. That new teacher poured just as much love into him as Ms. James did. But that new teacher was also on the verge of leaving because of pay. Because just like I have to pay my rent and my bills and provide food, these teachers also have to pay rent in the same housing market that I'm paying rent in. They're buying food in the same economy that I'm buying food in. So I know how it is for me and one child. I can only imagine what some of these teachers are going through, and it's not fair for them to choose between the career that they love and providing for their family. They've done this for years and years and years, and they've never had to worry about being homeless. We've never seen, uh, influx of homeless teachers as we do today, and it's simply because we're not paying. So, yes, parents can fundraise to put some extra money into the teachers' pockets and for programs. And, yes, teachers need more money. I don't see why people at McDonald's are making more money than our teachers. I don't see why teachers with a master, why I'm making more money with an AA than a teacher with a master's degree. That's why they're leaving. They're leaving because they're going to fields that's gonna pay them more, even though it's not what they're passionate about. They're passionate about educating our kids, but they can't survive on that. Thank you.
Okay, and Brian, same question.
I agree with a lot of, just about everything else you said there. Uh, so I got, I got the numbers here, I know the teacher's salary of every school district in Alameda County. And at Emory, the average salary at, is, uh, eighty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars at Emory. For, 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 uh, for the teachers, each teacher. The California state average is seventy-nine thousand five hundred and twenty. So you can see we're a little bit above the California average, although other districts in our, in Alameda County pay our, pay the teachers much more. For instance, Fremont pays their t- the average salary is ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and thirty. Uh, then you got Newark School District, it's ninety-eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand. So Emory Unified pays its teachers more than the state average, but less than the, uh, Bay Area average. Uh, cause it's incredibly expensive to live here. So I agree, we need to pay the teachers more. And so, I mean, we need, we should be paying our teachers a lot more, and we have the money to do it. So what we, I think we should be doing is love bombing the teachers. And how do I spell love? It's M-O-N-E-Y. That's what they, we should be showering our teachers with. And, uh, the, this last, uh, two years ago when I ran for this position, I, I complained that, that we should be ta- paying the teachers more, they're not paid enough. The incumbents had the temerity to tell me that their teacher, teachers are paid enough, they don't need anymore. And it's, no, that's not how you, how you fix a, a school district that, that, you know, really needs help. Uh, especially since we're in second to last position, we need to pay the teachers more. And no, we shouldn't have to rely on parents, cause we, this is a poor district. And the people here are not, don't have that kinda resources, most people, most parents don't. So the government, uh, can, can handle this, and that's what, that's how we should do it. Drop a love bomb on the teachers in the form of money.
Okay, Brian, this question starts with you. What is the percentage of students with special needs in the district? Do you think all students with special needs have been identified? Why or why not?
I don't have those numbers, uh, cause I'm, I don't work for the district, but, uh, I'm, I'm well aware of that, my da- my daughter fell into that category, um, for more years than she didn't at the district. Uh, and so I'm, you know, I'm very sympathetic to that. Uh, again, so I, I just can't answer the question, I don't know what, how, what percentage, and, and am I amenable to uh, helping students with special needs? Well, of course. You know, Elsie will be able to do a better, do a better job answering this, I'm sure, she seems to be pretty eloquent. Uh, but yes, the, the function of a school district is to, is to educate and take care of the children in the community. So, all children, special needs, absolutely. So, that's, that's all I'll say on this.
Okay, Elsie. All of a sudden, I can't hear you.
Oh no, you, I'm, I'm just breathing first. Um, no, all of our students have not been identified. No, our students are not getting the services that they need and deserve. No, it's horrible. The worst special education department I've ever seen in my life was there. I've never seen three schools sharing one therapist. I've never seen students go half the year without a occupational therapist. These are all things that are written into their IEP. No, how are you identifying students when the ther- when the psychiatrists and the occupational therapists are the people who implement and design the IEP and you haven't, they're... Last year, we went six months without a occupational therapist, that's ridiculous. Yes, do I understand that there was a shortage? Yes, but you were also leaving students by the wayside who genuinely needed these services. They needed them, they needed them to be successful in the classroom, they needed them, and we didn't have them. We were using temp agencies to fill these positions, that's crazy. No, how do you have one therapist for three schools? Or two schools, cause you got NE8s, the middle, the elementary, the junior high, that's one therapist. Then you have one therapist, that same therapist also works on the high school side for half of, half of twenty-twenty-two, you were pulling the teachers on their free lunch period over to the high school special ed department to run their curriculum support class, cause you had no special ed teacher for that. They went all the way to the end of the school year before you got a special ed, um, teacher to teach that class. No, they're not adequate when it comes to special ed. This is why our test scores aren't good, because the students aren't receiving the services that they need to perform in the classroom to the level that they should be. I'm done.
Thank you. Okay, and you get to start with this question, which is, do you think the district has done a good job serving students with special needs and along, along the academically talented spectrum? What improvements can be made?
No. No, they have not done a good job. And I'm just being honest, um, like I said before, and like I'm running on, I'm a parent. And I am a parent that is fighting for all of our kids, specifically children in the special ed department. Specifically those babies, because specifically those babies need services. Those babies need consistency, those babies need stability. They cannot grow into the fullest potential of themselves if every year they have, um, a new teacher. They can't grow to the fullest potential of themselves if we don't have an occupational therapist. An occupational therapist is essential. It's not a want, it's essential for the special ed department. The occupational therapist is the ones that's teaching them how to speak. The occupational therapist is the ones that's teaching them how to write. The occupational therapist is the ones that's teaching them how to regulate their emotion. The occupational therapist is the one who does all of this, but yet there's no occupational therapist. You don't have a therapist for them to sit down and talk to about why they're, they haven't been to school in four months. Or why they haven't been to school in two months, there's no support there for them. And once I'm already behind, thinking like a child, once they're already behind, they're gonna keep getting behind. Why do I need to go to school when I already don't understand what's going on and there's nobody there to help me? And then when the parents go and try to complain about what's going on, it's give us time and have patience. Like I told them last year, I've had all the patience I had for you. This year, change has to come. My child lives depend on this. No, I'm not, I will go to the state next, I'm coming to you today, and the state will be next. Because my son has an IEP that is a federal document, it's not something that you pick and choose, what you're gonna follow, you're gonna follow it all.
Thank you, and Brian, same question.
Okay, first let me say the last question, I told you that Elsie was gonna have, answer it really well, and sure enough, that was fantastic. And then to this question too, she, she's on fire, yeah, she's, that she should be listened to, she's, she's a really good candidate. So, uh, okay, I can't really speak to this, cause I don't, it's, I'm, I'm more know about this as an abstraction, although I remember when my daughter was at Emory High School, there was a dearth of AP classes or honors classes. I mean, it, it was really pathetic, the, the offering. However, just, uh, conceptually, I, I mean, I can't imagine what a really, like, what did you call them, talented academically tou- ch- ta- talented children? I can't imagine how hard it would be for an academically talented child at Emory, because that child is sitting in a classroom, and that, that's highly dysfunctional. And we know from the, the, the fact that there's, it's the second worst performing school district in the entire county. So, it's gotta be hard on those, those kids. And so, again, I defer to Elsie, she knocked it out, that, that answer out of the park. Uh, ob- obviously very knowledgeable, and, uh, so, yeah, she, she's, uh, she's, she's the one to, to listen to on this. I, I'm, I'm just conjecturing.
Okay, Brian, we're gonna start with you with this question, which is, what is your understanding of the state of student safety and well-being across the district? And what policies and programs can improve student health outcomes?
Yeah, I'm not very knowledgeable about this, but I remember a couple years ago, there was, uh, a, a student that was sexually harassed by a, a non-student that, that came into the, on, onto our campus. I, um, a, a young, you know, like a teenage, teenage boy. And the student was sexually harassed and in, in like a classroom. And, I mean, not, not much is harassed, just sexually assaulted. And I followed that case, and it was, uh, you know, it was, uh, the district didn't ha- seem to have the wherewithal to, to, uh, you know, to address the problem accu- accurately. And then further, uh, further in- incidences before that, I noticed- And then further, uh, further incidences before that, I noticed there was like a. The, the previous superintendent, like, uh, did not do his due diligence vis-à-vis, uh, safety issues. When they were called out by people, there's a, there's a state protocol of, of what you have, things you have to do when there's. Uh, you know, when this police have been called because of, uh, like, uh, you know, assaults and what have you. And the, they're called mandated reporters, and the, the school district just, just, uh, was completely dysfunctional. And there was, the people don't, the superintendent didn't know what amended a reporter was. And it was just, you know, total lack of professionalism. And I don't know if it's improved, but I know that in the past it was certainly terrible. I have to admit, since my daughter is no longer at Emory, my, my, I haven't been following it as closely, but I've, I've gotta assume it's, it's. If it's improved, it hasn't improved very much.
Hey, Elsie, same question.
Um, for me, safety and security has never been an issue for me at Emory. Um, I feel when I let my son go to school. He's going into the care of more family members that's gonna look after him as family members. Even when I see things in the community and I report back to the principal of Emory, like, she's right on it. Um, right before she left, I can remember calling her like, hey, there's a homeless guy. He's chasing the kids down the street. I'm parked at the corner standing out my car. And before I can finish pressing send, she was already out the door on the phone with nine-one-one. To get them to send the police to the area. So, um. I feel like my baby's safe when he go over there. Um, I do know, just based upon emails that were sent, they had some situations with a teacher. But when you short-staffed and you pulling anybody, it's bound to happen. Um, but that's pretty much it as far as safety there.
Okay, and Elsie, this question is for you to start with. What policies are in place when students are subjected to bullying in the district? What could be improved upon?
Can you repeat the first part one more time, please?
Sure. What policies are in place when students are subjected to bullying in the district?
Again, I only know from my own personal experience, um, when my child did experience bullying. I felt like it was nipped in the bud immediately. Um, they had already handled the situation, brought the students in, talked to them. Before I was even notified that it was happening to him. Um, I do think that getting programs in there for self-awareness will help with. Um, bullying, because sometimes, if we look at the population of kids that we actually serve. If you look at the de- degra- demographics of Emeryville, Emeryville in and of itself is predominantly white. But the student population is predominantly black. So if you just look at some of the things and think of some of the things that these kids are possibly could be experiencing. Sometimes bullying is because that's their way of getting out what it is that they're dealing with at home. So again, that's where the Community Resource Officer has to come into play. We have to get somebody that's wedging the gap in between the school, the student and the family. So that we can have an all-around picture, because we can look at bullying. My son's six foot five. So if he say one thing to somebody, that can be considered bullying. But what are we doing to be able to divert those behaviors into a positive behavior? Because not all the time is bullying bullying. Sometimes it's just their way of expressing and doing what's being done to them. In, at home or in their community that they live in. Some of these kids are coming from, we don't know what they go through when they walk here to school every morning. Or what they see when they go home every day, and that's just, they're just enacting what they've seen within their environment. That's it.
Thank you. And Brian, same question.
Okay, I have personal experience about this, but it's, uh, two years old. That's, you know, that my, my daughter is no longer at Emory, she's in college. But my wife and I adopted our daughter from China, so she's Asian, and she went to Emory. And she was severely bullied, and there was even racial, a racial racism component of it. I didn't freak out too much about the racial component, because, you know, they're children, and so they, they don't know any better. Sometimes children know, don't know any better, uh, you know, about racism. Adults should know better. But, uh, so, but she was pretty severely bullied. As a matter of fact, it's so bad. That, that's the final straw, the, the reason why we took her out of Emory, is cause she was basically being harassed and bullied by her classmates. And that we could not, the district was incapable of, of properly addressing it. So we had to, we had to run. We had to run away from Emory because of the, our, our child was being bullied so, so severely. Uh, that was, that's like three years ago, and so I don't, you know, I don't know if Emory's improved. I mean, maybe it has, I mean, I, that's, that's, my story is pretty bad, or my daughter's story, really. And so, uh, you know, I gotta imagine it's probably still, you know, probably still really bad. And, uh, so I, and I don't know how, you know, uh, there's probably a whole list of, of, uh, protocols. That a, a school district can follow to, to address bullying. Uh, and I, I suspect Emory wasn't doing it, because otherwise my daughter would not have been, had to leave the school. And so, I don't know if they're doing it now, and I'd be curious to see. Or on the school board, I certainly, that would be, I would be, uh, that would have that brought before me, and I, I would make sure that was addressed. Like I said, my daughter was chased out of the district.
Hey, we are coming up to the last question, and then after this last question, there'll be closing statements. We're gonna start with you, Brian. The last question is, what's the status? What is the status of ethnic studies in the school district? And how would you propose developing and introducing excellent curricula in the school district?
Okay, I'm gonna have to claim ignorance on this as well. I don't know what the status of the eth- ethnic studies was. I, again, my, I know from when my daughter was in the high school, there was, I know that there was no, uh, you know, ethnic studies for Asians. I know that, uh, I would have, I would have noticed that. Uh, I don't know if my daughter would have been interested, but I, but that wasn't available. Uh, so I, I have to imagine, again, it's probably not so great. Uh, one of the problems is, you know, it's a really tiny district, and it's really hard for really small districts to have, uh, you know. Really great departments in every single category, curriculum category. It's really difficult. Because it's, I mean, bigger schools have a, there's like an economies of scale, uh, advantage that you would have when you have a larger district. So, you know, I, I would, I'd give Emory a little bit of a pass for that, because like I said, just by virtue of the fact that it's small. But a- again, mostly ignorance, I don't know what the offerings are. I would guess probably not enough. And I'm su- sure Elsie would know more, and let, I would defer to Elsie.
Hey, thank you, Elsie.
They do not teach ethnic studies in our schools, but they should. Um, and that can bring back around to bullying. I'm taking a very interesting class right now at Berkeley City that I love. I was planning on dropping it, but I'm glad that I stayed. It's an intercultural communications course. Best class I've ever taken in my life. If we implement something like that at Emory, it teaches the intercultural pers- perspective. So it gives you the perspectives of the whites, it give you the perspectives of the blacks, it give you the perspectives of the Muslims. It give you the perspectives of the Asians and the Hispanics and the, it gives you, and it teaches you how to think. Within their culture, so that when you're becoming biased, you understand. Why they act or do some of the things that they do, because it's embedded within their culture. To do some of the things that they do. So I think that it's very, very, very important that we, in order to teach our kids, because. That, we have a lot of ethnicities at Emory, within the Emory Unified School District. But they don't know how to specifically interact with each other, with these cultures. Because again, some of the kids live in Emeryville, some of the kids live in Berkeley, some of the kids live in North Oakland. Some of the kids live in West Oakland, and they only interact with their own kind. But if we had classes to teach them about other cultures in one. Like, it doesn't have to be a black history class, or an Asian history class, or, um, Mexican history class. It doesn't have to teach that. This class teaches everything in one, at one time. I swear I love this class, uh, inter- intercultural com- um, communications.
Before the candidates give their closing statements, I have a few remarks on behalf of the League of Women Voters Bay Area Emeryville. Thank you to the candidates for running for office and for your participation this evening. I also want to thank the audience for engaging in our democracy. For further information and upcoming forums, the candidates' pros and cons and positions on ballot measures. Please visit the League's website, L W V B A E dot org, or vote four-one-one dot org. We invite you to join the League to help us engage voters and defend democracy. We do so much more than voter registration and education. Visit our website and social media accounts at L W V B A E. The last day to register to vote is October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four. You can register to vote online at the Secretary of State's website, S O S dot C A dot gov. All California active registered voters will receive a vote by mail ballot for the November fifth, twenty-twenty-four general election. Your county elections office will begin mailing ballots by October seventh, twenty-twenty-four. Vote by mail ballots can be returned by mail at a drop-off location for your county elections office. Ballot drop-off locations open on October eighth, twenty-twenty-four. Since Alameda County is a voter-choice county, vote centers will be open for early in-person voting, beginning October twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four. Vote by mail ballots must be postmarked on or before Election Day, and received by November twelfth, twenty-twenty-four. Remember to vote November fifth, Tuesday, November fifth. Now, the candidates will be making a closing statement. We will reverse the order that we began with. And each candidate will have two minutes, um, to give their closing statement. Um, Brian, your closing statement, please.
Good, this is off the, I have nothing written, so it's off the cuff. Okay, uh, the, the things I'm working on a- at Emory right now are, are very telling about this district. For one thing, I came to the school board, uh, about a year ago with complaints, you know, about the, their, their policies that they are, are promulgating. And I was talking about the things I talked about here tonight, about how, how badly this district is, is blowing it for our children. About how, you know, there's so much need for improvement. And I didn't mince words. I was very direct. I didn't, you know, didn't use any off-color words or language or anything. But I, you know, I've spelled it out, using the statistics from the State of California Department of Education. And I was attacked by a, a principal who interrupted my, my two, my, uh, pu- public speaking time. And he called what I was doing hate speech. So that's a huge problem. We need to be able to criticize our, is that the end of it? I said, says, stop. That can't be two minutes. There's a mistake, the mistake happened. I'm sorry, a mistake happened?
Closing remarks was only one minute.
Yeah, let's, uh, just, I will keep going for another minute.
Okay, all right, yeah, because I have an important announcement to make. So anyway, so, so the, calling that hate speech is completely wrong. The citizens need to be able to interact with the school district. And then there, there's a security gate problem, this can't seem to fix and keep our children safe. I won't go into details. I'll say that I'm the editor of the Emeryville Tattler, which is the online news site about Emeryville. I do a lot of school district news, so people can Google Emeryville Tattler. But last thing I wanted to say, I'm not running to win. I'm running to get, have an election. And so I don't care about winning. And so after hearing El- Elsie here tonight, I'm gonna tell, um, people to not vote for me. Don't vote for me, vote for Elsie. Uh, she's, I think she did a great job. She, I think she would be a new voice, and we need new blood, and that's what she would be. And so I'm saying, anybody that wants to vote for me, don't vote for me. I'm gonna stay in the race, but, uh, but I think my vote should go to, to Elsie. That's, that's what I'd like to announce.
Hey, thank you. And Elsie, your two-minute closing statement?
Well, I'm just a mama bear, a mama fighting for change. I'm not fighting for change for just my baby. It's my baby's last year. I'm fighting for change for all the upcoming babies that's gonna attain Emory Unified School District. I'm fighting for our babies to keep our babies educated and out of jail. I'm fighting for our babies to have the best possible future, because our children are our future. Our children, the ones that we're educating at Emory Unified School District, they're gonna be the kids that's gonna run this country one day. And we need to make sure that they're educated to the best of our ability, so that they can run a successful, productive country. And state and world, and whatever it is that they wanna be out there, go to be whatever their heart desires. I wanna make sure that they're equipped to go into this world and do the things that they wanna do. And again, education over prison. I don't wanna see another one of our babies go to prison. I don't wanna see another one of our babies shot dead in the street. I don't wanna see another incident at Bay Street and trying to figure out if these are any of our kids. I don't wanna see that, because, and it's not gonna be our kids, because with me in office, our kids are just gonna have programs. Our kids is gonna have places to be after school and before school and on the weekends. And our kids, our kids, our kids, cause your kids is gonna now be my kids too. But our kids together, and I think that I can be that change. I think that I can be the change that I wanted to see in Emory. I think that a lot of the things that are passionate to me as a parent, they're pa- as a parent, as a grandparent, as an aunt, as an uncle. They're also passionate to you too. Thank you for your time.
So for everyone attending now with us, and for those watching later, I want you to join me in thanking the candidates. For their time and their answers tonight, and I wanna, um, thank everyone for attending, and have a wonderful evening.